I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Sorry for starting a few minutes late. The meeting before this ran a little long. All right, call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurley.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Byn.
Here.
All right, we're all here this evening. Public participation, public comment period, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the board on any topic. Is there anybody that's here and would like to address the board? All right. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on. We have a National Engineers Week proclamation. I'll read the proclamation and then we'll, we're going to have a short discussion about it afterwards. Whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to improve society's quality of life, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to revolutionizing our infrastructure and technical progress, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century. Now therefore, I, Matt Broali, as village president of Montgomery, on behalf of the citizens of the, and village officials, do hereby proclaim the week of February 21st through 27th, 2016, to be National Engineers Week in all of Montgomery. With that, I guess we could, let's-
Most of you are thinking, "Thank God, Engineers Week only comes once a year." But I wanted to just report on a few things that are going on in the area. So, we put together just a short presentation. Jeff, if you can just go forward. So, maybe go to the next one. So, all kidding aside, we're trying to promote engineering during this week, obviously. It's a national event, and we try to get more dialogue publicly and try to really encourage young students to be interested in math and science. Most of the pundits are predicting engineering shortages in the future, so it is, I think, somewhat our obligation as practitioners to try to encourage people to become engineers. So, we spend some energy trying to do that. Next slide, please. In the past, at our office, we used to do a model building competition for the kids at the E.I., and it's been fun, and people have enjoyed it. But this year, we decided to move out a little bit and expand to Krug School. So, we're doing a presentat-, or a competition there called "Don't Lose Your Marbles," and it's basically a fifth grade class that we're sponsoring, teams to do, to build a, and you can just go to the next one, Jeff. Basically, they're going to build a contraption, if you will, out of these fixed amounts, and then we're going to have a competition to see who's the best team. And we started, the first week of February, we had 12 engineers there to coach them. We tried to not do it ourselves, which is hard to do sometimes, but we got them started, and you can just roll some of the pictures. It was very rewarding. That's just the first day we were giving, setting up the rules. So, it teaches them to work in teams. It teaches them to, obviously, understand and follow the rules, and then be creative. And one of our main goals was to have fun throughout the event, and I think we've done that, I hope. So, we're going to be going tomorrow as kind of the pre-competition, and then on Thursday is going to be the actual competition. And Mayor Broali has volunteered to be one of our honorary judges, along with State Representative Chaplavilla. So, we're happy that they were able to come out there. We're going to give the kids, all the kids, a book and other things, and then there's going to be trophies for the winning teams and that sort of thing. So, it's been fun, and again, just try to promote a little bit of engineering. It kind of falls into place because Krug School's doing their career day this week as well. So, on Friday, they're having a career fair there, which is cool. So, I know a lot of people from Rotary are going to be there to promote their professions, and we're going to have a couple engineers there as well on the last day. So, thanks for the indulgence, Mayor and Board. I just wanted to let you know that we are doing a little bit-
Awesome. Yeah, if you want to take 10 or 15 minutes next year, I'm fine with that. You can keep increasing the time. Obviously, very big supporter of engineers and the work that you guys are doing. So, appreciate it. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval.
We need a motion to approve.
We can.
Second.
Oh, okay.
Trustee Spurley.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, consent agenda. We have minutes of the village board meeting, February 8th, executive session minutes from February 8th, the building report for January 2016, accounts receivable report for January of 2016, accounts payable through February 18th, professional services agreement with Lauderbach and Aiman for auditing services, and ordinance 1713, which is granting a special use for outdoor storage for 1400 Boar Avenue. And this is second reading. If you recall, we discussed it at the last meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll, please.
Trustee Spurley.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byn.
Yes.
I carry 6-0. Thank you. Items for separate action. Item A, and is this the same as item B? Are they the same?
Yes.
All right, so I'll read them both. We'll vote on them separately, but we'll discuss them at the same time. We have recommendation of plant commission, PC 2016-002-SU, amendment to the special use for outdoor storage and a special use for alternative surfaces located at 1065 and 1079 Sard Avenue. This is JPC Tree Care. And then we have, following that, we have ordinance 1714, which is the first reading, which we won't vote on tonight, by granting the special use, the amended special use, and then the additional special use. It's hard for me to get through, but go ahead.
It's a little bit confusing, but thank you, President Broali. The plant commission at their last meeting reviewed a request by JPC Tree Care Service that had been previously granted a special use for that location in 2013. At your station tonight, there's a colored aerial photo that shows what was approved initially in 2013. That's the area that's identified in blue. It's outlined in blue. What JPC Tree Service would like to do now is expand beyond what was already approved in 2013, and in fact, they have a pile of mulch and other wood materials that are larger in more of the area that's to the north, if you will, where you see trucks on the aerial. They've asked for that as an expansion of the special use itself, including a variance to allow for alternative surfaces, which we've talked about many times recently in terms of other outside storage facilities. So, the plant commission at their last meeting heard testimony from both the applicant and residents in the area, some of which are in the audience tonight, and the commission made a recommendation to deny the request for special use as it had been presented. So, it is the first reading for this item. We're not asking for action on this tonight. However, it is the recommendation of the plant commission that you have before you, and then the first reading of the special use with the variance.
Does the red area represent the increased?
No, the red line represents the entire ownership of their property. Basically, the area that you see in the light gray, that's north of the blue line, that's the area, in your packet, there's a more detailed expansion plat, but I just wanted you to see this at your station, in case you hadn't gone through your packet. Jeff has the ability to pull these up on the screen as well. This exhibit is also in your packet, and if you'd like to, applicants representative is here tonight, if you want to go through that, or any other further discussion we can have.
It says the green line is what would be allowed.
Are we open for questions now from the board? Yes.
Since the first special use was granted, how many months have they been in compliance with their first special use?
Well, I don't know if I could answer that in terms of months, because the initial special use was in process prior to me being on staff here. I'd say for the last year, at least, they've been out of compliance with what was granted in 2013.
Have they made any effort to become compliant?
Well, I would honestly say that within the last month or so, when weather's permitted, I think that the pile had exceeded what I would estimate to be over 15 feet high. It's down now from what it had been, I would say, in the beginning part of the year. It's down quite a bit, but it has expanded. It's larger than the area that's shown in the blue, and you can see that identified. Jeff, can you go back or forward one slide? I think that there's another one.
This one?
No, maybe go down one more.
Okay.
Pass the one with the green. Yeah, it's going to be tough to see, but the area that's identified, and again, this slide is in your packet as well, so you might be able to see it better in front of you, but the pile is an aerial since 2013 that shows that it's larger than what was approved in, at that time, for the original special use.
So, this request for the expanded special use is essentially a situation where they've never really been in compliance with their first special use. They've expanded beyond that, and they're essentially begging for forgiveness now and want to expand to this new special use to include what they've already done. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
We've got a little bit ahead of us, ahead of ourselves there. I know the petitioner is here this evening. Would like to invite you to the podium. I know you wanted to say some remarks as well.
Thank you, Mr. Broali. My name is, for the record, is Daniel J. Kramer. I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Illinois. My address is 1107A South Bridge Street, Yorkville, Illinois, and I represent John and Jessica Cordero, who are the owners who are here tonight, directing just the three questions you asked, Mr. Jungerman. Number one, it's not true that they've never been in compliance. When they first got the special use, they were simply tenants at the property. Aurora Blacktop owned it, and they were in compliance then. Back in 213, when they started, it was a new business. They had not been in business before. They were told they could rent the property because it was M2. They did not know that it needed a special use, and when the village brought that to the attention of both Aurora Blacktop and the Corderos, they immediately came in and filed jointly with Aurora Blacktop. So, the, better than the first year, they were in compliance, and originally, they thought their business was going to be limited to removing trees and stumps, which they do. They frankly have worked for the village in the past under bids. They thought they would just be doing wood chips, but the business expanded faster than they could have ever believed. They started out with six employees. All of a sudden, they were getting work all over the area from municipalities, corporations, and private parties, and they acquired more material, and they couldn't get the chips out fast enough to get rid of them, so that's when they started mulching the chips. In terms of a second question about the drawing, and I really appreciate Mr. Young putting that up there, the first exhibit that had the blue outline of special areas, absolutely correct. That's what the special use is as we stand here tonight. If you look at the green area, that is actually not what we've requested as the full expansion. What that arc is, is what staff came up with, with an ordinance that you've passed, saying that on industrially zoned properties where there's residential adjacent, if you followed that green arc, that would be totally outside the setback under your ordinance of what can be used. What the petitioner has actually requested in their application, and it shows up better here on the overhead than it does at the drawing at your seat, is north and south with perpendicular to the blue area, there's a black line there, and that black line is right where they put up a very nice wood board fence. And so, the petitioner actually asked to increase the special use, everything west or behind that black line, which is the board-on-board wood fence. Inside that fence, there would be a limestone driveway that there would be nothing on, and then there would be a setback on that, a bit of a landscape setback to provide for access for drainage to flow through, because the natural flow of the water from the area to the east is under that fence, through it, and ultimately backed by the tracks and to the north, which my client owns, but which is actually in the city of Aurora, that's vacant and above that blue line. So, again, we are asking that we be allowed the expansion all the way up to the black line. If the village board does not see fit to do that, we could live with the green line, and all of that area that you see colored with the alternative surface with the limestone and gravel, that was all in place during Aurora Blacktop's time. They haven't added any of that surface. That's what's there now. If the special use was granted consistent with that green arc that staff laid out, they would be in compliance totally as far as area. And to answer the third question you raised about what have they done to try and get in compliance, since mid-last summer, when they got the notices of violation, they started hauling out the mulch at great expense to the firm quicker than they could sell it to the public or users of the mulch. They've spent approximately $40,000 in landfill and trucking fees getting the pile down where it is now. So, they have made some attempts to comply. Again, as I say, given the history of the parcel where it's zoned heavy manufacturing, and we stress that with the plant commission, when they started out, brand-new business, they used six employees.
I don't think that's zoned heavy. I think it's-
We think the ABT part that they bought, we believe, is M2. But it requires a special use for outdoor storage is the reason they-
I'll verify whether it's M2 or M1. Regardless of whether it's M2 or M1, both require a special use.
Sure, yes.
But we believe it's M2 under your zoning map. As the company grew from the time they were tenants at the place, they now have 26 full-time employees, and the expansion would allow them to increase that by another nine to 12 full-time workers here in the village. We realize economic development isn't everything. There's got to be restraints. It's not just a matter of money. But as it is now, even if they were in the blue area, the concerns that have been raised by staff and neighbors are odor and potential dust. They can do things for dust control and have. Odor, again, is pervasive in the area. We don't think we're the cause of it. If you go to the west of our parcel and west of the railroad tracks, there is a mammoth pile that dwarfs our facility, that whether we're there or not, with the prevailing winds from the west, that odor's going to migrate to the residences two blocks east of us in Oliver Street. If you go north of the property my client owns, about another two blocks, and you get up to Wrathbone in Aurora, maybe three blocks, again, it dwarfs anything that the pile to the west or my client is. And driving by there in the summer, when I was first retained, Wrathbone, I could definitely smell when I sit in two blocks of it. My clients, I couldn't, and again, I don't know how you would ever separate odor from my client and that to the west. So, when they discovered or were served with the notice of violation, we sat down with engineers about how we could draw it, how we could get in compliance. We've looked at water and done topo on the site. Staff has recommended that if you grant any expansion of the special use, that we present a stormwater drainage plan to see if detention is needed, and if it is, we've got plenty of room for that in the area that we don't need to store, and we can also store water, again, on that property we own to the north. Our neighbor to the immediate south is Stafford's Auto Salvage. They've expressed no objection. The owner across the street of the three commercial buildings that I believe are zoned M1 indicated he doesn't like the use, but again, it's not a residential use, and the residential users are on Oliver, which is the angled street, kind of on a 45 north-south. Again, the Corderos have tried to be good members of the community. They've got a lot of employees hired by them, and we'd love to keep doing business in the village. Thank you.
I guess I got a question right away, and that is, you continuously said, "My clients can do this. My clients can do that." You weren't here the first time when they came in.
Absolutely not. You're right, I was not.
Right, you were not. And all we heard, and we were all here, was how, "I'm going to do this, and I'll do whatever you say." And in my opinion, he has done nothing from the day he walked out that door, when my mulch pile's going to be 10 feet high. Now, you can talk about his mulch pile that went from 40 feet to 30, but he still isn't 10 feet, and he's still not in this little one, and he made the comment, "I am not going to sell to anybody else." The first thing he did, sure, there's a market for it, but he decided, "I'm going to just do whatever I want." We tell him, "No." He doesn't listen. He pulls a water meter out. They call him for the water meter. "How much water have you used?" He won't call back. So, that problem, I guess, has been solved because he don't have the meter anymore. But there's so many things. How do you get your client to turn around and say, "I will abide by your rules"? Because we sat there, and you mentioned the big pile, and people out there, plus Bill, who I've known for years, who lives right on Sard, he said, "That smells so bad." And I said, "Don't worry, Bill. It's only going to be a 10-feet-high, small pile for his own use." And that quickly went away. So, naturally, these are all my old friends, and they're looking at me like, "You told me at that meeting." And I said, "Well, that's what he said, but just because he don't do it, what are we supposed to do?" So, if we give him a special use, you don't give a who, what, he can talk all he wants, but I don't see any action by this gentleman doing what he want. Now, I'm sure his business expanded. It's nice, but he's not listening to the rules, and he really doesn't, I don't think, feel that he has to abide by our rules.
Well, when you say he hasn't done anything, I answered Mr. Jungerman's questions as to the truth of what he's done. He spent a lot of money hauling away, put up a beautiful wood fence that he-
Yeah, but that's his, that's his problem, because he put it there. And sure, last Friday, right before or right after the planning meeting, he had a little bulldozer up on top, pushing it, trying to make it lower, but all it was is spreading it out more.
The hauling has taken place over several months, Danny, not just over-
Well, he's still, he's still not close to his 10-feet little pile that he started with. Not even close.
Well, again, you're asking me, "Has he done anything?" He has. Is it satisfactory? I'm not going to fight with you. I'm just telling you what he's done.
How do we make him get it satisfactory?
Well, I think the staff put several things in the proposed ordinance as far as nuisance bonds and those sorts of things, and I presume if they don't comply, you'll do either some type of injunctive relief or ordinance violation. I'm not sure which of the two, and I don't tell Mr. Anderson what to do. He's quite competent, but you do have some teeth.
Well, he definitely should have went after the ordinance violation in '14, because it was there, and we didn't do, our staff didn't do anything, and like, Rich just came on, but we didn't do anything for a long time, and he, it just, the problem got worse, and that smell is still enough of it's there that it's bigger than a 10-feet-high small patch.
Well, again, when he started, at least came to us and got the notices, they were in the summer of '15, and from that time on, you know, I've said, "You've got to take corrective action, because you're going to hear these things." None of this is a surprise to me, and so, we've tried.
This, when they originally came in, this was not going to be a mulch manufacturing facility. It was going to be wood chips for his own use.
Right.
Now, it's a mulch manufacturing facility, which was something that this board felt very strongly against because of the smell, because of the other situation. And here, it has turned into a mulch manufacturing facility for exceeding the 10-foot pile that we weren't okay with that pile being mulch, just wood chips. So, I agree with Trustee Lee that, again, you came in and said one thing and turned around and did another, and now you're coming back and want more. It doesn't make sense.
Well, all I can tell you is what the proposition is. Now, I know John was there at the beginning, because he did come in with the realtor for Aurora Blacktop. I don't know that he had an attorney. I know Hallie Long was here with the Aurora Blacktop people, and we knew they implied. I haven't listened to the tapes, but I'm not fighting with you what you say was said.
Dan, just have a couple questions.
Sure.
The, what's the current height of the pile now-ish?
Around 12.
12 feet. So, it's in, so it's inside the window. That was one of my concerns, too. If the special use was granted, I was curious if they were already under the 10-foot limit, or 15-foot.
Well, we asked to go to 15, and again, we asked to go to that black line. Your absolute strict line of the ordinance is 10 feet.
Right.
So, if that's all you gave us, that would be it, the 10. And again, if you gave us to the green arc that staff has drawn as opposed to the black, he would have to live with that.
Okay. I struggle with this, because, you know, I don't expect or anticipate somebody, when they're going to buy the property, they'll research it, I guess, deep enough to know that the special use that exists isn't going to cover them. So, I struggle with that, them having a profitable use of this manufacturing, manufacturally-zoned property. What I struggle with even more, though, is that we granted the special use, and we had a lot of conversations about it. We wanted to, I feel like from where I sat, we wanted to at least give them the opportunity to do this use on the site, because they purchased the property, and tried to find a way that where it wouldn't impact the residents in that area. And so, we'll go through our special use process. And by the way, thank you for going through this process. Nobody required you to come here and go through plant commission and that. So, we went through that process and really, you know, did the, at plant commission, looking at the impact that this would have on the neighboring properties. And at the 10-foot limit, I guess, this board and plant commission felt that it wouldn't have an impact on the neighbors. My biggest concern is that although the pile was significantly larger than that, the pile that's there today, in my opinion, impacts those homeowners and their enjoyment and use of their property. And that's something that I really can't get behind, that this use is now impacting their life, and we allowed it. Now, we're going to allow it to expand. So, that's generally my thoughts on the process, and would like to hear from, from the rest of the board members on their opinions on this.
Just one comment. Had Mr. and Mrs. Cordero been experienced business owners, I think they would maybe not have been so naive when they first rented it. And again, being advised it's M2, so it's heavy industrial, he can basically do anything that's manufacturing-based, because it wasn't till, again, with Aurora Blacktop and them already in the rental arrangement, that somebody said, "Hey, you actually need a special use. The M2 isn't broad enough under the village ordinance to do it." And again, is ignorance an excuse? No. Is naivety the truth? It is. If they had had somebody like us that look at it, not that we're so smart, but you've seen me here before, we kind of at least know the stones that get thrown. We might have investigated more. But like I said, they, they did go through the process. They've worked with staff to try and limit the impact, and we think if we get it down to that 10-foot and within the green area, that's the best we can do. In terms of your M2 zoning ordinance, as I've told the Corderos, there are an awful lot of uses that don't necessarily anticipate outdoor storage that could be a lot more difficult to blend with a neighbor next door in sense of the entire property being zoned M2, because you get into some issues that if you got the whole top of the table that's M2, and you say to somebody, "Gee, you've been zoned M2 for decades within the village of Montgomery, but you can only use this little bit of your property," then you get into some much more complicated taking issues. And I've said, "Look, the best you can do is go in and try and cooperate with whatever conditions the village puts on." So, they are here hand in hand, asking to do that. I'll be quiet.
Okay.
I don't mind you saying you got 25 more employees, and I don't mind if he puts 25 cars and 25 tree trucks in there. It's just that it's the material, and he sat there and said exactly what he was going to do, and he didn't do it. Now, I don't know what his plans are. Maybe you could ask him, "What is his plans? What's he selling now? Is he selling mulch, or is he selling wood? Is he cutting trees down, or is he, is he trying to sell, or is he charging people to come in and drop trees?" to come in and drop trees, or, you know, what's his business? Has changed."
Cutting trees down. His base business is and always has been cutting trees down, grubbing out stumps. That's still the same. But what he has found is there's such a volume of the material when you run it through the chipper, that there's really only two uses. Actually, he told me a third one today, but it's not applicable to him. He's not big enough to do that. Once you get that amount of chips, the only thing to do is either A, make mulch, B, if you were a really big generator, some companies buy that material to make like the particle board that you might see instead of drywall, but he's not near enough big for that. And he said, "Sometimes people will use that material for fertilizer and so on, not mulching it, just down to chips." So otherwise, i-if you don't mulch it, you don't make particle board, or you don't make chips for other uses like the fertilizer out of it, the only thing you can do is haul it to a landfill. And, and that, again, gets very expensive and just fills up a landfill as opposed to people using it for landscaping purposes. So there isn't a whole lot of uses for the trees when he brings them in, other than to do those three things.
You mentioned earlier that they had spent $40,000 to have this hauled to landfills. That's a cost of doing business.
Absolutely.
And your business growing when you don't have the space to keep it. And again, one of the concerns with this board was, it was not going to become mulch. It was wood chips only, because of the sensitivity to the neighborhood. And it's now mulch. And now it's a massive mulch.
Yeah, definitely.
So the cost of his business growing, well, that's great, but you have to find something to do with this stuff, and that's a cost of doing business. He didn't do that to accommodate us. He did that because it's required by the ordinance.
Correct.
And he didn't do us any favors spending that $40,000. It was a part of the cost of his doing business. I just wanna clarify that.
I think a nuance that I remember was that this was not intended to be a storage yard for anything. We talked about wood chips, and we talked about it moving out pretty rapidly. And I think most of our concern revolves around the storage component, and that appears to be a volume issue. But I've heard enough from the residents, and I've driven by it enough myself, that the storage issue is a severe one.
Good.
The only thing that I would add, again, I agree with what everyone has said, and I do recall at the beginning, there was talk that it was going to be removed fairly regularly. What it comes down to for me, when Mr. Cordero was here, I know I personally was very impressed with him, what he had to say in bringing his business to Montgomery, but I also expected him to be a good neighbor in that area. And with, again, as, as Denny has put it, essentially just kind of doing things and then coming back and saying, "Oh, I'm sorry. I'll fix it." And things haven't quite gotten fixed. You know, he, we're, they're still sitting out of compliance at this point. So I, I just cannot support this at this time, because I, I just don't feel that he was a good neighbor to the people and the businesses that are in that area.
I wish you'd answered the question that, if he's gonna cut more trees down, and he, and he does work for us in some cases, I've seen some $7,000, $8,000 bills go through here, so he has worked for us, and that's good, because he's local. But at the same time, it's his problem to get rid of that mulch that he said was only gonna be 10 feet high and a small pile. Not, "Let me have a special use, so I can spread it out for another 100 yards." That just, that's not, that's not what we were there, that's not what he started out as saying he was gonna do. And these people here are the same way. Now, they're stuck between two mulch piles, and we said, "No, that will never happen." Well, if we give him a special use, and he goes another 100 yards with mulch, I don't care if it is only 15 feet high. He's gonna have a big mess and smell again. And that, that's my only comment.
Well, and again, you're gonna have three, not two.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other thoughts from the board on this, we can do this one of two ways. The item A and B is the recommendation of plan, or A is the recommendation of plan commission. The plan commission voted to deny. So if we were to vote on A tonight, the recommendation, if you were to accept it, a yea vote would mean to deny. If we vote on A tonight, which, which we can, there would be no need for, for the ordinance in the future. So item B, we wouldn't vote on, because it's first reading, but if we're denying it, we don't need an ordinance. That's option one. We can take action tonight. Option two would be to table the recommendation and deal with this at our next meeting. So if you needed more time to look into things, then let's do that route. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to vote for option number one of your two options.
Okay, so.
Do you need a motion?
Well, yeah. So with that, let's just move forward with A.
I'd like to make a motion, motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation regarding 107-9 Sard Avenue for JCP, JPC Tree Care LLC special use.
Second.
Second. Second, is there any discussion on this?
And just to be clear, a yes vote is to deny, to not allow this. A yes vote is to deny.
Everybody clear? All right, call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Byrne.
Yes.
Trustee Spurley.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
I don't understand what you're saying, though.
If you vote yes, you're saying they cannot expand. If you vote no, you are saying they can expand.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right, and that carries 6-0.
Again, although we disagree, I appreciate your time, and staff was very gracious with their time, so thank them for their time.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on. So item B, we, it's a first reading, so we can't take action, and we won't see that on a future agenda. Move on to item C, ordinance 1715, amending the village code regarding tap-on fees, and this is the first reading of that. Who wants to give the introduction? Engineer Wallers, thank you.
So the change that's being proposed to the tapping fee ordinance is really just a refinement of the existing fee. Right now, we charge $3,591 for a single-family home. What we've done is made it a little more logical, so that if you have something less than a single-family home, then we compute the fee based on population. So the original calculations for storage and supply, which is what we cover with our tapping fee, were basically derived by, for each population that we add to the village. So if you had, if you have an apartment, for example, that would, one apartment, one-bedroom apartment, the EPA declares that that would be one and a half population. So we think it's a little more logical then to charge them for the amount of people that we're adding to the village as opposed to just having a set $3,590 per residential unit, no matter what the residential unit is. So it's a refinement of the existing fee, but for single-family homes, it won't change. It'll be the same as it's always been, which is the $3,590 or $91, depending on how you round it, but it's $1,026 per population equivalent. That's, that's the change that we're proposing.
And this is, I would say, so far from being an out-of-the-box idea. This is pretty standard.
I, I think it's very defensible. It's very standard. The table that we've used is right out of the IEPA permitting forms, so that there's really no, I don't think there can be argument about it. I mean, there can be arguments, certainly, but we have a, a pretty defensible source, because it's, it's defined in the Part 370 of the, of the standard for IEPA.
And all we're doing here is making this more fair, if you were coming in with something less than a single-family home.
Yeah, it would come into play if you had a townhome, or obviously if you had an apartment complex that had a series. It just, it doesn't, it's really not fair, I don't think, to, to, because the intent, obviously, is to charge by the population as opposed to the, the unit, if you will.
So currently, if it was an apartment building, they would be paying the $3,500?
Per, per unit.
Per apartment?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Doesn't matter if it was a one-bedroom, three-bedroom, or a penthouse.
The only item that jumped out at me a bit, and I'm not being quarrelsome, I just was a little troubled by a three-bedroom apartment or a three-bedroom townhome is a better value than a single-family home. And I wondered if that's based on the theory that a single-family home might have four bedrooms, or...
I think it's based on EPA's experience that a, a single-family home is more likely to have a larger family.
If I might also add, if it's okay, it's very rare where you see any apartment complex programs that include three-bedroom units. At most, it would maybe be about 5% of any larger development. And Pete's exactly right, where you look at the true population counts that the school districts like to look at, it reflects a higher population out of a single-family, four-bedroom home than it ever would in terms of a three-bedroom apartment, which is rare to find, anyway.
I'd also see water usage, too. With seeing a family home, you have a yard, you could have a pool, this and that, where you might not with a, an apartment townhome.
How does a duplex fall into category? Is that townhome? That fall under townhome regulation, or is that single, it's not really a single-family?
Well, you know, we could add it, but I think if I was looking at it, it would probably be some sort of either a townhome or...
Two-bedroom apartment. It would fall into the three category.
It would fall into the three. Yeah, I think so.
You know, as Trustee Marisak mentions, that condo comes to mind, too. We might someday very well have condos along the river shore here, and maybe a category for that would be appropriate.
It's similar to the apartment. That's the way we would treat it today. From a zoning perspective, the density is essentially the same in the, even though one's rental versus for sale, it's, it's essentially the same type of structure.
Okay. Could we add, just make sure that there's a language on that in here for duplex and condos, if that, if that's not too hard? I know that can factor into somebody's research. Without having a call, they could get a pretty clear idea, so. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none. Is anybody opposed to putting, placing this on consent at our next meeting, or a future meeting? All right. Thank you, Pete. Move on to item D. We have a word of contract to Geneva Construction for 2016 Infrastructure Roadway Program. With that, I will turn it over to Director of Public Works, Todd Hopstead.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see, there were, in your packet, there were two bidders for our road program. Geneva Construction is the low bidder, including alternate two. I'm sorry, I'm, I've lost my figure here. Pete, do you have any?
The engineer's estimate for the entire... I'm not, I'm not sure that this is helping. Yes. The engineer's estimate for the entire project was $1,729,566. The total bid is $1,431,464.50. So to do both, with the alternate, we're still underneath the projected engineer's estimate, and we think it's a worthwhile endeavor to go forward with both.
You know, I'd like to expand a little bit. So recall that we, we, we added doing work in the alleys this year, which, you know, has been a long time since we've visited those. The alleys are generally in the older part of the village, and that, most of that, the village was developed before we put in any kind of rear yard drainage or any kind of real drainage system, if you will. So the new subdivisions that you may recall, some of you obviously live in the new subdivision, there's drain tiles in the rear, there's places to connect yourself, they're really engineered for drainage, whereas the old part of town, it wasn't, you know, developed that way. So we've had standing water along the alley areas for some time, and it, you know, ponds along the alleys. Two things have happened. Originally, when the alleys went in, they were V-shaped to try to carry water away, but over time, as they've been resurfaced, they're now sort of arched, so it sort of traps water along the edges of the property at the thresholds to the garage, or just along where they have little parking turnouts or whatever. So we thought that one way to address the, that drainage issue fairly simply would be to use permeable pavers, permeable pavement, and new aggregate base to allow water to soak into the ground, and then we've added some drain tiles. So alternate two was the addition of that drainage system, if you will, for the alleys. And it's not just the drainage system, it's rebuilding the base of the alleys, too. So we're gonna, we're gonna remove the existing aggregate to whatever condition it was. We took soil samples there to make sure that it wasn't contaminated, and it could be hauled to a clean fill. But this would put back clean stone, and then we've got a video of how this permeable pavement works, that we thought if we could just run it briefly, you can get a kind of a flavor for how it operates. It's basically coarse-grated asphalt that allows water to pass through it, is the best way to explain it.
All right. Hope you can see this with the light. We will see.
Insert oohing and ahing right now.
You should've given a nerd alert before we had this part of it, I guess.
It goes with the proclamation, Pete.
That's impressive. Yay. Ooh.
So, you know, we have permeable pavers at Village Hall, but they're pretty expensive per square foot. So this is a way to accomplish it on a bigger scale. We've not done it before. It's not, you know, it's been proposed in, in areas, but, you know, we just haven't used it here. So from the staff perspective, we think it's a good way to demonstrate the use of the product, but more importantly, to correct the drainage problem in these alleys that we've had for a long time. We got good bids on it, on the alley alternative. We thought that it would be somewhere $170,000, was probably closer to $100,000 extra. We got a really good unit price on the asphalt. We didn't hand out all of the unit prices, but when we looked at it, it was a real strong unit price for the, for the permeable asphalt. It's a special run of asphalt that has to be done. So from the staff perspective, we would like to, we would recommend that we provide that. We think it's an, it's an enhancement to the older part of the, of the downtown. We have spoken to Director Van Vuren. I think the resources are there through the, the tax program to support it. So again, we got competitive bids. I think it, it shows off the strategy of getting out early. That was important, so that worked. You know, that was a good, you know, the first thing, first, most important thing, really, was to get our bids out early. We got good pricing. And then this was obviously an add-on that we discussed, but it wasn't contemplated initially, but we do think it brings some benefits. So it's up to you, either way, you know, both programs will function. I think we have the resources to do alternate two. Slightly more expensive, but I think it provides some value that we don't get with the other alternative.
If I might add, we've had a, a number of complaints regarding the condition of the alleys, not only from the, the position of the pavement degradation, but also the drainage. And typically, it's either a complaint solely about drainage, or the complaint is citing both factors. We anticipate that this permeable pavement will alleviate the drainage problem. Either program would address the degradation of the pavement, but the, the true benefit here is that we eliminate, or we anticipate eliminating, all the complaints as they are.
If I'm looking at this grid correctly, alternate two corrected bid is actually lower than the engineer's estimate. than the engineer's estimate for the alternate one option?
Correct.
So, we're still under budget?
Yes.
Okay.
An inexperienced question. If we make it easier for the water to percolate downward, are we putting more pressure on the basement foundations of the properties?
So, what, what'll happen is, and we, we don't have, that video isn't very good at showing it, but, but the pavement is permeable, then the stone underneath is permeable, then we have, instead of a standard, you know, 12-inch or 18-inch storm sewer, we have basically six-inch storm sewers that are draining the low area.
Okay, good.
So, some of the water will percolate into the ground. We hope it will, you know, but anything that can't get through the ground normally will then be taken out of the six-inch pipe. So, that's, that's how, in theory, it should work.
Okay, perfect.
I just had two questions that I suspect that you knew were coming. The, you know, we got two bids for this work, which is good, it's competitive. Do you have any idea why the, any reasoning behind why none of the other individuals bid?
Well, the other two firms had plans out. You know, this is, I don't know for sure why they didn't bid, but incidentally, Aurora bid their project just like a day after ours, and their, their project was a four, I think it was a $4 million project, and they only had two bidders on theirs as well. You know, do the other, did the other ones have state contracts locked up ahead of time? You know, it's, it's all about your workload, and, you know, how much work you need, and all of that. So, I can't, I could find out, Mayor, but I don't know for sure.
Okay.
You know, we were pleased that we got two competitive bids from people that we've worked with, and, you know, obviously Geneva's local, and Builders has worked in the village before and done fine work. So, you know, we were happy, we had good competition, we had good bids, obviously, and, you know, that's what we're really after.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
You said that this was first reading.
No, that was the last. This is item D, award of a contract.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, are we rewarding alternate one or alternate two?
Oh, that's correct. I would like to see us move forward with alternate two.
Alternate two corrected, I believe.
This is the first time that we've ever had pervious asphalt in Montgomery, so I'm very behind us doing that, so. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. All right, move forward, item E. I know Trustee Youngerman already wants to make the recommendation for this. Purchase of Parkway Trees?
Not, actually, not yet.
Well, let's let Todd give an introduction first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try and do this one a little bit more efficiently. So, we're recommending the approval of a $41,950 expense for the purchase of approximately 280 new Parkway trees from two different nurseries. The reason I say approximately 280 is, at this point in the dormant season, it's hard for the growers to tell exactly the health of those trees. So, as, as we progress a little bit closer to a spring bloom, which we may even see in the next few weeks, they'll better be able to determine if all their trees are healthy. We may have to make some slight adjustments in caliper size or species, which could affect the price, but we will not exceed the $41,950. And our goal is to get, you know, 275 to 285 trees planted this spring.
All right. Thank you.
I was looking at going over my packet today, and blame it on my day job, but I was comparing prices, and the village is actually getting a much better price than we get. And then, secondly, this is gonna put, put us in the approximately, how many trees for the year? For this fiscal year? I'm not sure that I can answer that accurately. I wasn't, wasn't here until July, so I'm not sure how many we planted this spring. I believe we've put in about 20 to 30 trees since I came on board. Our focus, I think, earlier was, was still removals, so I don't know that I can accurately answer your question. And then, my, my other question, I guess, for the, the board members, the, I know Trustee Bond and I are trying to push for 300 trees this next fiscal year. This has nothing to do with next fiscal year, and us trying to find the additional 33,000 for the, to get to the 300 mark, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question. And it's tied into next year's budget. I guess I'm a little bit confused. So, we're looking at purchasing, within this fiscal year, roughly another 280 trees, approximately, I get that, for the 41,000. We have, I believe it's 51,000 budgeted for next year, and roughly how many trees do we think that will get us?
Not all of that is tree purchases. Some of that stump removal, stump grinding, pruning, so we're talking 175 trees in the budget. Because not that, that whole, that's the whole tree budget, but it's not all purchasing trees.
Okay.
We'll work on that.
And I guess, then, never mind. I'm done.
The other component, somewhat of a moving target, is that with so many municipalities and property owners affected by EAB and some other diseases, that the nursery stock is severely depleted. So, when we might have been able to specify a three- or a four-inch diameter tree in the past, we're now having to accept inch and a half, and two-inch, some smaller, less experienced growing trees. As, you know, demand continues, prices can fluctuate, so it, it might be safe to assume that prices continue to go up as nursery stock continues to be depleted. So, it's, it's kind of hard to gauge what we can get for a certain value, especially when we're looking that far down the road.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to just see, I mean, I'd like to see that we're being proactive and looking that we have some money left, two year, two months left in the budget. Let's get some trees, which we've all been complaining and wanting to get more of. And I'd like to echo Trustee Spurling, Trustee Bond, and Trustee Youngerman's request for anything we can do to get additional trees and get that number up a little bit for next year. Because we're, we need them.
Agreed. I, I must applaud our village arborist, Ed Faff. He, he was instrumental in getting the prices that we've gotten, and as Trustee Youngerman said, they are very competitive prices, so his legwork has paid off in this regard.
Be sure to tell him thank you, Formos. I appreciate it.
All right. That'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. All right, move on to item F this evening, which is Resolution 2016-002, authorizing the application for Kane County Riverboat Funds and execution of all necessary documents. That'll turn over to Director Young for summary.
Thank you, President Rowley. This was an item that I mentioned last week at the committee of the hall briefly, where we talked about a joint program on behalf of the Rotary Club of Montgomery and the village to make the application for the Riverboat Fund. That is an application that goes in each March for municipalities and service organizations. And what I mentioned last week was that one of the things that I believe that the county looks favorably upon is when groups get together, both nonprofits and municipalities get together and try to do projects together. So, we're hopeful that this will be something that could be granted. What the Rotary Foundation has in mind is some monetary donation. I don't know what that amount will be at this point in time. Staff has talked about a portion of our funding for next year on the capital side to be included in this program, and what the county generally likes to see is, if not a 50% match, a significant match to go along with the grant app itself. So, what I'm trying to say is, is that we're going to put in for a $20,000 grant with the county and come as close to a 50% match, either in like-kind services, or funding from both the village and the Rotary Foundation. The goal would be to do as many as possible of a small, but still significant entry monument out of stone at key locations within the village. And we'll come to you at a later date what those most appropriate locations would be. Obviously, there's six or eight that we all can think of that would be great to, to look at. And then, my idea would be, like-kind might be donations of landscape material, or service groups, say a Boy Scout Eagle Project, or other service groups working to help finish out the landscaping, as long as the monumentation has been covered. So, we need the support of the village board to put in this application.
Any comments?
It's a great idea. Thanks just to see if it can be successful.
The final design of that, that's something that's done by community development in partnership?
Well, we definitely consult the village board on that, obviously, and there were designs put together in 2007 by Shoppe Design. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow to go through those designs that were put together. There was a series of different types of signage, kiosk signs, smaller entry monument signs for the areas that I'm talking about, and then one large sign, not sign, monument area that would have, at least initially, it was designed to be right out here at Lake Street and Webster, on the other side of the tracks. So, that's not what we're talking about as part of this grant program, but there was a series of monumentation designs, and I just need to nail down from those designs what the actual cost would be in today's dollars.
If there's no other comments, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on, items for discussion. Item A, we have fiscal year 2017, capital and other funds budget. With that, I'll ask Director Van Voren for his presentation.
Thank you, President Rowley. In your packet tonight, you should have a list of the different funds that we'll be talking about, and the different projects. I will go through these and highlight several of these items. Morefield Tax Fund, we would look at road salt of $175,000, and then no actual road projects in MFT this year, instead doing those every other year. Capital Improvement Fund, we're looking at Blackberry Crossing West Bike Path. Those are contributions from a developer. Orchard Prairie North and Saratoga Spring Sidewalk, also a contribution from developer. Light Road Crossing, which is a ICC grant reimbursing us for the entire amount. And then, Public Works Site Planning and Leaf Transfer Improvements. Infrastructure Improvement, which we just spoke about earlier today, and the board approved the contract with Geneva. Revenue is about 2.6 million, the road program of 1.4. And then, we would also look at doing Briar Cliff Road Laffo, and that is $857,000 program. However, we would, we're hoping to receive a grant for $500,000 for that. Tiff number one, we would look at two projects in that area. One is rough grading and seating of Village Parcel behind Grandma's Table. The other is Pearl Street Storm Sewer in that area, and we would look at debt issuance to complete that project. Tiff number two, we would look at revenues of approximately $250,000, and then we would refund a portion of that to the other taxing bodies. Tiff number three, we're looking at the possibility of a third tax increment district. Vehicle Reserve, General and Water Fund are both contributing at 100% at this point. The expenditures, they're listed out there. They're a total of 11 vehicles, and with those 11 vehicles, we will, we will be positive in the Vehicle Reserve Fund, even after purchasing those items. Refuge Contract with Republic expires on December 31 of '16, so we would look at sending out a request for proposals later on this year, and we would bring that back to the board at a later time. The other funds that are listed there, I didn't want to forget them, however, there's not, it's just the normal revenue and expenditure activity, except for software upgrade in Police Department, and then dredging in Arbor Ridge. If there are any questions, I can answer it this time.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't have a specific question on what we just covered. I just wanted to, I reviewed everything line by line. I had time. I went through all that. Just wanted to see, I would like to make an appointment with you to kind of go over some of the line items. There were some things that looked like they may be duplicates, or just explanation of the line items, so I'll check with you this week.
Certainly. Thank you.
Just a comment. Thank you for going through that quickly.
Okay. Doesn't sound like you have any other comments. Obviously, we're not approving any portion of the budget this evening, so you have plenty of time to review this.
I have one question. The salt portion, is it being adjusted in light of the current situation?
It may be adjusted at a later date. We are still looking at that, working with Director Hoppstead to determine.
I don't want to jinx it. I'm good with the nice weather.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, our current fiscal year was budgeted at about 250,000, and it's already being adjusted down to 175. So, I, I think it's accurate to say it is being adjusted. It can be further adjusted if necessary.
Is we have a surplus carrying forward?
Correct.
And for next year's salt purchase as well.
We were obligated to receive how many tons? 2,000? So, the way the state contract works is there's an option that you can check, and we did in April of last year, when the Director of Public Works submitted his bid request. It was 2,600 tons, checking the 80-120 option. That means a minimum of 2,080 tons. We expect not to exceed that. We're about 80-85% full now, and we still have nearly 1,300 tons yet to take this year. So, I think I need to have that here by July, so I'll be looking for alternate ways to store it.
Thank you. We'll move on to item B for discussion, the quarterly financial report. Again, back to Justin.
Thank you, President Rowley. I'm not going to go into the details in this, but for General Fund for 2016, we were budgeted at $9.4 million. Through the nine months ending January 31st, we're at just over $8 million, or 85%. Being nine months through the year, obviously, it's, we should be at 75%. So, our revenues are higher than they would normally be. However, that is due to getting property taxes earlier in the year, so. If there are specific questions about the revenues or expenditures, I could, I could answer those. I'd like to move on to the Capital Improvement Fund. We had budgeted $1.6 million in the Capital Improvement Fund. Revenues through January are approximately $1.1 million, or 66%. So, those are actually, those revenues are actually lower than what we thought we were going to have at this time of year. However, electricity and natural gas are somewhat cyclical, so you'll see that percentage go up a little bit over the next three months. go up a little bit over the next three months. Moving on to the water fund, the water fund, we budgeted revenue at $4.7 million, and through January, we're at $3.87 million, or 82%. And with that, if there are any questions about the budget to actual numbers, I can answer those, and then I'll quickly go over the investment report.
Go for it.
All right. Investment report, cash and investment report. The Village holds cash for ourselves, and then we also hold cash for others. The Village currently has approximately $9.2 million that we hold on our behalf, and then we are holding $11.7 million on behalf of others, for a total of $21 million. And with that, I'll answer any questions if there are any.
You know what the lifespan is on the Lakewood? SA?
When it was originally approved in 2001, it was 25 years, so it will go through 2026. It's another 10 years.
Okay.
Right?
I think, because we did it at one point.
We refunded it in 2006, but it's still, it's the same timeframe.
All right, then yes.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll chew on that one as well. All right, let's move on to item C. We have a private property traffic enforcement agreement. With that, I'll ask Attorney Julian for her report on this.
Okay, yes, thank you. This item was prepared at the request of the Police Department. It is informational only, it doesn't require any formal action, but it is just something that we wanted the board to be aware of prior to contacting any private property owners, making them aware of this agreement. As you may know, the state law allows municipalities to enter into agreements with private property owners such as Walmart or Menards to perform some sort of enforcement activities on the property. Absent having such an agreement, really, the Police Department's limited to just monitoring the handicap spaces, so this just expands it a little further. It's mostly still parking-related offenses, going wrong way down one-way aisles, but kind of it has a twofold purpose here. Number one is, it's my understanding that there's been a number of owners that have been contacting the PD and requesting some sort of enforcement. And secondly, there's some confusion over which businesses do have these agreements in place and which don't. And having a single form will really just help streamline the process and will allow it easier for the PD to monitor this and to also respond to the business owners that have questions, you know, and be able to provide that services to them. Any costs on here for putting signage or striping is to be borne by the private property owners, so there's no additional obligation on the Village. It's just something that if they choose to do that and put that in place, then the Police Department agrees to enforce, you know, those restrictions. So with that, if the deputy chief has anything that you'd like to add, otherwise I can take questions.
No, I think you explained that pretty well. Again, it's just to streamline the process and have everything more centralized, so that we can get that to our guys and the property owners, so they can get that coordinated. We have one location where we can get that. If we need that for court purposes as well, it's easier to get that information.
Do we currently, is there, do we have an agreement with any businesses currently?
There are, I believe, two or three in place, and they were entered into back in the, I mean, you could probably speak to the specifics, but they're older agreements back from the 90s. They usually have a 20-year lifespan. So again, you know, as things are coming up for renewal, it's easier to have everything consistent where you're not, you know, having to cross-check across multiple sources.
Right, and those were listed in their survey plats, so building department has to go find the plat and to get that agreement off of their front us, in order for us to take that to quarter, make sure we're enforcing the correct ones.
I think this came up four or five years ago, too, those signs at the parking lots. I think, like, I think the shopping center where poor boys is and that, there's a sign that's rusty, beat up, run over by trucks, 10 times, everything, sitting there saying, this car can be, your car will be towed away if you leave it, and then it's some Chicago firm or something. And I think four or five years ago, we brought that up, where these guys are putting signs all over town on every empty lot, in case somebody had a car, I think it's very big in Aurora, where they have the festivals, and somebody slaps up a sign and tows the thing. And I think at that time, Denny Schmidt said that the police could do the same thing as a private company can, is that correct?
What the Police Department is able to do is, there's a number of items enumerated on the actual sheet. It does make it easier for them to remove vehicles that have been sitting there.
I know most of this is for, like, like you said, handicap, but it is in the usage of, so these guys' signs, we could get rid of if the property owner knew he had an agreement like this. He wouldn't worry about some firm out of Aurora, Chicago, coming in and pulling cars away for him.
Well, the property owner could still contract with a private person if they so choose, but it also makes it easier, and it allows the Police Department, the authority, to also get vehicles removed that are just sitting there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question regarding the tractor trailers, because I know we had some complaints about that. Is that a separate agreement? Because I did not see that in here. Do you know, is that a separate agreement?
That's not a separate agreement.
Yeah, what is listed in here is everything that the Police Department's authorized to by the statute. So I just went through the statute, and everything that it gives us authority for is what's included in here. So I don't believe, I don't recall seeing that.
It wasn't listed in here. But since the chief is not here, I'll bring it up with him. We've had conversations that there are some sort of existing agreements out there regarding the tractor trailers. Are you aware of that at all, or?
I think, if I recall, the existing agreements are with those different properties, but we still can enforce that with these agreements.
Okay, so it would fall under this one?
Yes.
Wouldn't semis or tractor trailers fall under prohibition or regulation of the turning of vehicles and vehicle types?
Are you, yeah, I mean, you could, there are certain vehicle types or certain weights that a property owner could choose to put on the property. It would be incumbent on the property owner to come up with that restriction, regulation and turning. I'd have to reread the exact language from the statute to see if it's limited to moving vehicles or parked vehicles.
Handicap parking is covered by state statute. You can go to any parking lot. Because that's against the, okay. But this is for speeding, running stop signs in Walmart parking lot, things like that. You could then enforce those.
Yes, and for example, the person, you know, that might have their car idling in front of a Jewel, Osko, or, you know, have a car illegally parked somewhere, this would allow the police to enforce that as well.
Yes. For like the stop signs regulated, if you remember when Kmart was in business, the stop sign right in front of there, with that parking agreement with them, we could enforce that, otherwise, there's no real action to take if someone just disregards those signs. So this will help ensure we have all that in place.
What would be an example of something that might fall under item L in paragraph two?
On that, I'm not sure offhand. I mean, it's a catch-all provision from the statute. I'd be interested in actually looking up the case law to see how that was enforced, but offhand, I'm not really sure. I don't want to speak without having an opportunity to investigate.
Is it to our advantage to have, to leave that in, or?
Yeah, I think it's in our advantage to have as much as we can in there. Better to have and not need it than to need it.
Yeah, it just allows a little additional flexibility.
My other kind of comment slash question, since we're taking the initiative here in packaging an agreement that will, I think, improve and formalize our relationships with the larger retailers, is there, are there some things they could be doing for us that might fit nicely in this agreement, too? Are there more proactive things they could be doing that would make law enforcement easier?
The agreement will also state the cost for them to put the signs up and everything. An example is an establishment that has the no truck parking. It's incumbent on them to put as much signage as possible. Some places have it, but it's, it's almost inconspicuous. You want it presented so that it's well-known, there's no questions about it when we enforce those actions. But I agree, it's going to build a better relationship, and we can go there, here's what we enforce, here's why, and we'll do that pretty flawlessly.
This doesn't address inside the store, like with video security, or external video security?
No, this is just related to the vehicles in the parking areas or outside the property.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on, any new or unfinished business to come before the board?
I have maybe two. With the whole discussion around special use, either at the Plan Commission or here, the comment was made, let me just lay it out this way, I'm not sure that we ever approved mulch at that facility, but a comment was made that we did not forbid it either. And I, if that's true, if that's an issue, I'd like to clarify, when we authorize a special use, or is it incumbent on us to say what we don't want, or is it, it's either here or it isn't, kind of an agreement?
If I can speak to that, sure. No, it is not incumbent on you to describe what is prohibited. The very nature of a special use is to say that that which they seek is not currently allowed. So when you describe what you are permitting, you're making that exception, but it only goes as far as what you describe. So if under the normal ordinance, by way of example, mulch is prohibited, but you allow wood chipping processing to occur, and that's distinct from mulch, by allowing wood processing, mulch is still prohibited.
Well, that gets me to question two, then. Could we clarify whether that special use specifically mentioned mulch, or if it referenced wood chips?
We can do the research.
We can do the research. I believe that it talked about wood processing only.
He did mention mulch, but he mentioned a 10-high pile and only like a 10-by-10 area. That's what he originally discussed, and 10, he needs a measuring stick to figure out what 10-foot was, because you want way over that. And that, I think, is, we mentioned that, that it, that was fine, because it was for his own use, and it'd be in and out right away, and it just didn't happen.
Right, he said it wasn't going to sit there very long. It would be constantly.
No. It was the wood chips, not mulch.
No, if there was mulch.
We may have to dust off that tape, just to clarify, but it's worth the effort, I think, in this case. I'm stinking in the third question on special use. Well, then this is 2A.
Stan went to law school as well.
Bad analogy, but an analogy nonetheless. When we grant a liquor license, and the owner changes, we withdraw that license, I think, and reissue. I'm wondering if our process for special use permits could be altered in such a way that when ownership or activity changes, we can call back discussion on that use.
So it's a good question. The metaphor, while apt, is not really applicable to this situation. The reason being is land use, the considerations that you, as a board, or the Plan Commission or the zoning board needs to take into account, all relate to the use of the property, not who owns the property. And so that's why, in most circumstances, I suppose we can envision something where it would be truly unique, it is not to be considered who is the owner, because I think you can see that that would invite opportunities for abuse, where we say, we'll give the, we'll give the use to you because we like you, but we don't like the next guy. It's, does it meet the standards, or does it not?
There's a possibility someday, if not this day, for the board to say, gosh, that seemed like a good idea at the time, but it really hasn't worked out well. Do we have a way to recall a special use?
Generally, not. However, you've actually already taken that step in one example after this one, which was the Xenos property up on Lake Street, where it was represented that this would be a temporary use of that property. And so you took that gentleman at his word and accepted that, and so it actually has a time limit. Most special uses do not, because there's nothing temporal about what they're asking for. But in those cases where, where there is something like that, yeah, it is appropriate, and I think it's something that you can do. But, but, you know, you can't really say, in your typical special use, I'm not coming up with a good example, you know, you can't expect somebody to build a building and then in five years, check if they can keep it, you know.
Something to be mindful of, maybe, next go around.
Anyone else?
The red and black of Wisconsin is still doing strong. Just want Tiff to like to hear that. But also, the red and the gray girls' basketball team is doing decent, so I just wanted to let Mr. Youngerman know that.
Thank you. All right, moving on, future meetings. You can see Plan Commission on March 3rd, and then our next Village Board meeting will be March 14th. With that, would entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss the employment of an employee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You can't move in second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Thank you.
This is what happens after you have an IGA.
All right, call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll, please.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack. Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Can we adjourn? Thank you.